This conference will now be recorded.
Okay. The time being 4:45, I'd like to call the meeting of June 29, 2023 to order. We'll now say the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First up is the review and approval of the minutes of 6:01. Just, we're going to review the corrected minutes only.
I'll make a motion to approve the corrected minutes from June 1, 2023.
I'll second. Motion's been made and seconded. Do we have discussion? John, you need to turn your mic on. After hearing no discussion, all those in favor of the corrected minutes, June 1, 2023?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
Approved.
I'll look at June 6, 2023. We all set with these minutes, or need more time?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of June 6, 2023.
Essman, second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Discussion? No? Hearing none. All those in favor of minutes on June 6, 2023?
Aye.
Aye.
Approved. June 15, 2023? Why I have an agenda attached to my... You do? Does everyone else have an agenda attached to their June 15 meeting?
Yeah, but it's for today.
Yeah, for today.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from June 15, 2023.
Essman, second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the minutes of June 15, 2023. Discussion?
We have one, one thing.
Okay.
And I would like to make note that the agenda attached to the back of it is not part of the minutes of that day.
So noted. Anyone else?
On page four, selectmen Dawson. The request, I mean, I got the board's permission to have Tim give us access to the cameras. Consensus? Which isn't reflected in the minutes, and I could be remembering it wrong.
It seemed to remember it being just that, but can't recall exactly, Kevin.
We're, page four, I'm sorry. I'm on the wrong page. Hold on a minute. Now, I do remember you asking. I don't remember us saying, everybody, yes, absolutely. Can we take a look at it?
Like I said, I could be remembering it wrong.
Yeah.
I thought there was kind of a consensus, yes.
Could be. I just can't remember it. Sorry. All right. So we'll just take a look at that one thing that, with consensus about the cameras. Otherwise, it's all set to go. Okay.
Excuse me. So are you, so you want me to send them back and have her look at that?
Okay. Just have her... Just listen to that part, and if we granted access to that consensus, to access to the cameras, then that needs to be put in the minutes.
Okay.
Okay, so now it's time for the Land Use Quarterly Report. Leanne Mornihan, do you want to come up? Mic's already on for you. Please remind everybody, talking to the mics, because last week, administrative assistant couldn't hear some of us, even though we had our mics on. Okay. Hello?
So I assume the members have a copy of the report, or do you want, I have hard copies if anybody would like them.
I don't have a hard copy.
You do or don't?
I do not.
I'd like a hard copy, because I did not print one out.
I don't see one in here.
No.
I have them.
We asked for one for earlier, to be printed early for, I mean, sent earlier, so everybody could review it.
Thank you.
So I don't know if you keep up with the numbers from month to month, but there will be a little bit more of a jump this month, because I did not come last month, because of, I think the board was tied up with, obviously, the building issues. But our building permits have jumped up significantly, which is always expected in the summer. And other than that, primarily, we are busy with the major projects that are going on in town, which I know everyone is aware of. The Preserve, I can tell you, is moving along very well. I believe they're on schedule. They will be coming back to the Planning Board for some amendments, because they did finally get their DOT permit approved, and so that's going to make them adjust a little bit. And they're going to be coming back for a bridge crossing. They want to put a walking bridge near the wetlands to, from the parking lot. So they'll be coming back for some more approvals in August. But we have our engineers, town engineers, that are over there on a regular basis, making sure all the drainage and, and everything is being done correctly. U-Haul is also moving along. They don't have their building permit yet, but they do have most of their site work done there right now. If you've noticed, they're putting in the cisterns, those big, huge cisterns that they're going to have to put in. So they've been working on that. I was out there and walked the property with our engineer as well, because they put in a detention pond there. And that looked actually very well done. I was kind of happy that they, our engineers were pleased with that work. So that's going well. As soon as we get their money, we will let them start their construction. That should start, again, as soon as they're, they submit their performance bonds and, and some escrow money that they owe us. Other than that, I know there was some question at the Planning Board meeting last night on Haven Grove, which a lot of people have been curious about, because they cleared all those trees. That's Mr. Bernard's property. He is coming next month with a plan, I think it's going to be a temporary plan, but he's looking just to do some storage there. He's not going to be doing any building or paving, but he wants to use it as storage, I think. So that's going to be coming to the Planning Board in July. There was a question of the wetlands there, but I did go over there and walked it with John, and we identified that he was not in the wetlands on that property at all, that he was well clear of that. And he had some drainage set up along the roadway, which was working well. He had a, even had the drainage sock all along the wetlands area, so that was being well maintained. That's a 50-acre lot. He's only developing 1.46 acres right now, is all that he's impacted of that 50 acres. So, so that's going on. The Shell project is kind of on hold till next year. I think they're not going to start rebuilding the Shell project down by the Tilton Diner. They've been in zoning, but they haven't been to planning yet. Tilton School is continuing to work. Every summer, they always do a project, the mansion. They've gotten some permit requests for the mansion. We have Smitty's that's looking to expand over at the Plaza, which they're having some issues with their architectural plans. That's kind of been a back-and-forth battle with the architects there for some fire suppression and some other issues they have going on with the plans. But I anticipate they'll eventually work it out with Sean and Chuck. And I think that is all the major, and the Dialysis Center, of course, is ongoing, but they're in the final phase of their work over there, and that's all going pretty well. I think that's all the major projects that I know about and potential major projects. We always have people coming in inquiring. Someone came in today looking to do some housing developments, but no one really has come forward with any definitive plans. Our boards, oh, did I not double-side this? Do we have a double-sided copy? Oh, everyone's missing, oh, here's a double-sided copy, but everyone only has one side. I apologize. I didn't get the double-sided copy. I know you were all sent it by email, but on the back is basically some of the complaints we've been working on, which was, there was an issue with lighting at the Fraternal Association, which we went out and took some pictures and sent a letter. We didn't see any new lighting, but we're going to have them address any lighting they have. I think the lighting that is glaring over there that someone complained about is because it's pointed at a flagpole. And so we gave them proper instructions on if they want to light the flagpole, what the proper way to do that is. We also had unregistered cars over at 148 East Main Street. There are a few cars on the way back, and they received a letter too, and have a limited time to respond to that. Gaslight Village is being addressed. There's an attorney working with Gaslight Village to remove that trailer that's, was never supposed to be placed there. So hopefully, that will get, they're kind of in the same situation, they said, as we were with Mechanic Street, that they can't just remove it because they don't own it. So they're working through the court system to remove that. We have Prospect Street that continues to be a problem with the, with the trailers that are over there. They've received a number of letters, but I don't seem to get any response. And, oh, BJ's is going to be doing a renovation project, too. Interior renovation and possible expansion, but they're putting their expansion on hold. So that's, we have plans that are being reviewed for that, and as always, the outlets are always coming and going in various ways. And that's all I have, other than my boards. Planning Board, we only have one opening, and I, today, and I brought a copy, if anybody wants it, of a gentleman who has come forward for the Planning Board. I will be bringing this to the Planning Board and the Planning Board Chair at the next meeting. He was a selectman in Boscoon and on the Planning Board in Boscoon. He'd like to be involved. So I'm kind of excited that we have someone new who wants to be on the Planning Board. That's usually the board that people don't want to be on. They think it's too much work, I guess. I don't know. So his name is Paul Dickey. He brought that in this afternoon. So you'll probably see it after the, I think the procedures, it goes to the board, right, for a recommendation, and then we bring it to the selectman. I think that's what I was told, the procedures now. So I'll bring that to, to the board.
If the board is not aware of this gentleman, then we're going to ask him to come in and interview.
Yeah, and I would think that the board does not know this gentleman, since he's new to town. So, and on the zoning board, we are down back. We had a full board for a very short time, and unfortunately, as you know, we lost Eric. So we have one opening on the zoning board. So, and always alternates, would be nice to have enough for alternates, but...
Did I see an email that there was an application for somebody for the zoning board?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
The board hasn't gotten anything, though. The zoning board doesn't have it yet. Does it, did they go to the zoning board? I don't know. I assume we bring it to the zoning board first, right? I don't know. We can talk about that after.
I'm not sure what the, did you see it, Jeannie? The application for...
I think that was, are you talking about...
Jim?
Yes. I, I do believe I did see that, but I don't think Leanne was copied on it. I was.
Jim? Do I know Jim?
Do you know him?
Oh. Well, if they want...
Gymcropsy.
Oh, Gymcropsy? Oh, well, he had applied for the Planning Board, but you can't have conservation, two conservation on the Planning Board. So are you talking about the Planning Board when he applied to the Planning Board?
Zoning.
Oh.
This was after.
Couple of weeks ago, he applied. Within the last two weeks, I think.
Well, he was at the zoning board meeting, sitting in the audience, but didn't say anything.
That's a good sign.
I don't have anything. We can bring it to the zoning board, but...
I'm looking for the application now. I believe that this, who sent it to us?
It's nice that people are stepping up.
Anyone have anything else while she's looking for planning questions?
Anybody else have any questions for...
I have a question on where Mike's Automotive used to be.
Where my what?
Mike's Automotive used to be next to that.
Yep, they came to Planning Board. They're, they were on their...
So all of that activity has been site planned?
No, none of it.
Oh.
No. Well, there is a site plan. Well, they came to Planning, I had them go to Planning Board, because they wanted to change the use. They wanted to sell cars there again, so I pulled the old plan, which was 2004, so 20 years ago. And I looked at the plan and the conditions of approval from 2004, and I looked at the site, and obviously, they were not the same. So I had them come to the Planning Board, but the owner hasn't been forthcoming in that process. And unfortunately, the guys that are leasing down there don't have any authority to be negotiating with the Planning Board. So a letter went out yesterday, certified to the owner, that he needs to respond in seven days.
How did it evolve into what it is now?
I am not, I think, I don't know. I don't want to speak, I don't know how it evolved into what it is now. I think it did change. It was sold in November of 2022. I believe Mike Rivers owned it prior to that.
Yeah.
And so someone new purchased it in November, and then people started coming in to rent, you know, saying they're renting Bay 1, and they're renting Bay 2, and we started to see, and then finally, this, because it was a repair shop, so, you know, someone new wants to run automotive, but then when this gentleman came in, I'm not going to get into names, and wanted to sell cars. He already has a business in town. Chuck went down there and said, this is a big mess. And so then I went down, I said, you need to come and possibly, possibly have to redo your site plan, because I don't think anything is meeting the original site plan. So that's what that's it.
I was curious why it took so long to stop it.
Well, I think it was, I don't know how long those cars have been there. I never got any complaints, but I think when this last gentleman, and I have no idea when it started, wants to sell cars, I think he's bringing his junk cars there? Because the guy who's running the repair shop says none of the cars are his, and none of them are for sale. So, I mean, I don't know. And that was the problem. I don't know when it started. I don't know who's responsible. But I said, you need to come to Planning Board. You're going to have to redo a site plan, and we're going to have to take action. And I can give you a copy of the letter I sent to him, certified yesterday, and I gave him seven days and told him he has to come to the meeting on the 11th and address these issues. So that's where that property is. And I have pictures of the property as well, which I brought to the, well, John knows. John was at the meeting. So that's where that's at.
So presently, they have nine flags there, seven signs.
Right, and one, yeah.
Seven signs, two additional signs on windows, 55 cars, a U-Haul business, and looks like a junkyard. There's tires piled up, a filled-in detention pond. Every single thing on that site is non-conforming. Why would we just send a letter and wait if everything there is illegal? I mean, we can't wait another month or that.
I gave him seven days to respond to me. That's what I did.
And can we get a copy of that letter?
I have it right here. Yeah, of course.
And it states all the violations or anything, or...
Yeah, I don't know that I said the signs, because everybody's got signs if we're going to start that, but I mean, we can certainly...
Right now, it's ISO and nine flags. I mean, that's violation.
Yeah, and I don't have any problem with any signs, but I thought that was the least of it.
Letter sign that's not allowed without a permit?
No, we don't have that ordinance.
Yeah, we do. We have those temporary signs.
We have a sign in Jordan. Not a changeable, changeable signs are allowed, only not allowed in downtown.
The portable temporary signs.
Oh, portable.
With the changeables, you must have driven by there, right? You saw?
I didn't notice the signage. I was pretty much concentrating on the, what, the backland, the junk cars and the... Want to give you the right one. I've got a lot of letters. I did, this is, yeah, this is it. There you go.
So you just said you didn't make notice of the signs. You only paid attention to the back of the lot?
I took pictures of the back of the lot, but I didn't notice the portable sign. I did notice those, actually, I did notice those, all those flag signs when I was pulling out.
My understanding is that you are the code enforcement officer now?
Not now. I'm, I'm the zoning enforcement officer, yeah.
Okay, zoning code enforcement officer.
Yeah, okay.
And then we have a building inspector who inspects building codes.
Correct.
So as a zoning code enforcement officer, why wouldn't you look at the entire lot, especially a lot that is so out of... Whack. I don't understand why you'd only pay attention to part of it.
I didn't only pay attention to part of it. I just said I didn't notice the portable sign. I was concentrating on the cars. That's, that's what I did. And there are a lot, a lot of properties in this town that are non-conforming, a lot, that are, and if...
Sorry to interrupt you, but this is not a non-conforming slot. This is a lot.
Violation. There are a lot of properties in violation.
In violation.
Right.
All over it.
Yeah, and there's violations all of town, and, but this one is, is bad. That's why it received the letter and was brought to the Planning Board. I felt that a property owner should have an opportunity to respond before a cease and desist, so the letter was sent. I don't have a phone number for him.
You have a property that's in this much violation? They filled in a retention pond?
I don't know that they filled in the detention pond. That I did not confirm.
It's not there anymore?
But I don't know that he did it.
I don't mean to be facetious or sarcastic, but I'm a little bit in awe. I am very familiar with the site, because as health officer, I've been visiting this site for a number of years, because the former owner of the garage has complained that the septic system of his neighbor was leaking, when in fact, it wasn't. I've taken multiple tests, water samples, and, and it isn't. The septic system is not in failure. I had DES come up, so I've, I have walked the site. It's not a dry site. And I am surprised at how it's been allowed to just...
Well, you've never made me aware of that.
Into this mess.
Have you, you've never made me aware of that, have you? You've never notified me and that I didn't take action. You say, Ben, I, I, it's the first I've really been involved with this site. That's all.
But you are the code enforcement officer.
Yeah, I am. One person, yeah, for the whole town. I am the code enforcement officer. There are many, 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 many properties.
We only have one code enforcement officer.
I think we need to let one finish and then the other talk, but I also want to remind the, everyone, that we are talking here with employees, and we're in a public session, so be very cautious. If we need be to go into non-public, we can do that. But in public, we, please remind our, just be reminded that we're talking to an employee.
I also have a question on poor decisions. They were going to come before the Planning Board and request outside dining, and they haven't done that, but they've installed outside dining. They installed a new doorway and staircase through the side of the building. And they didn't get any site plan with the distance from the neighbor.
No, because they didn't really, they weren't, they were just going to put some picnic tables on the grass and rope it off. And so we had fire and code enforcement look, and they said you had to have safe stairs. And so they got a building permit for the stairs.
And isn't that right on the setback from their neighbor?
No. No, we walked property. Chuck and I met with him and looked at the property. He was going to put a couple picnic tables. He wasn't going to be on the, and he didn't, he just put them on the grass.
And does the other site where they cleared all the trees?
What site?
Even Grove, yeah, I forgot the name. Was that mapped by a scientist and drainage plant?
I don't think it's stamped by a soil scientist, but I do have the plans here, and it's all marked with, it's all flagged. I have some pictures as well, if you're interested.
So he's done drainage? He said that he started...
He put a, he put a sock, I can show you the pictures. Those is...
I was wondering about the drainage that you said he's installed.
No, just, there was rock along the drive, when you went into the drive, where there's stone.
And...
Did you want to see it, or do you not want to see?
Is it mapped by a soil scientist?
I don't, I don't think it's stamped by a soil scientist, no. Well, I have his, yeah, this is mapped. Did you want to see the, the plan?
Which plan are you showing him, Leanne?
Now we're on to Haven Grove.
But what plan are you, are you doing a wetlands plan that you just said?
It's a plan for his, that he's coming to Planning Board on the 11th. For the parking.
And that, oh, it's just for parking, though? It doesn't show wetlands in there?
Yeah, it just, what?
Oh, it does, okay. I just want, for the public, because they're all watching, I want you to identify which plan you're showing to the selectmen.
This is Haven Grove, fellow Seacite plant. Be going to the plant, the Conservation Commission, DES, to have the wetlands flagged. It's very close to it.
Yeah, they're flagged. It is flagged.
Have a soil scientist... Have a soil scientist, it should be stamped by...
I don't know who flagged.
We've always required that. Could go to the Conservation Commission to comment on that.
I don't think he flagged it, I don't, I can find out who flagged it.
Who put the socks there, along the?
I assume, I assume he did, I didn't ask who put the sock there.
I see rocks on the other side of the socks today as I drove by. I think I did.
Yeah, there are, yeah, there are rocks there on the other side of the sock.
Rocks or boulders?
Well, there's rocks, it's like a rock wall.
Large, large rocks, but boulders.
Yeah, right here, you want to see the picture? There's the picture. Those are the rocks on the left, you mean?
Right there.
Those are recent.
Where the flags are.
These are recent.
You want to see the flag? The flag is, it's in... It's so deep in the woods, I do have a picture of it, but I don't know if you can see it.
I see this, the rock, that's like a wall almost, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And how far away is that wall to the wetland?
Oh, at least twenty-five feet.
Okay, and so the sock is beyond that, because it's on the opposite side of the wall?
Right, right.
I got it, got it. Anthony, you got any questions, or?
No.
John, you got any more questions?
I'll sit, we'll get the... Just statement that he really needs to get that professionally mapped and go to Conservation Commission, where there's so much wetlands involved with runoff and stuff like that, storing motor vehicles. Just to save him time, so he doesn't come to planning board and then get told you have to go back. Because I think Conservation is right before planning board, so we can...
Usually the Monday, right?
Are there any other questions online or in the public here in the room for our land use coordinator, Leanne Mornihan? Jane, I didn't see you come in. Nope, okay. Appreciate you coming in, Leanne, thank you.
There was one more, the first student, they were gonna come back with their site plans and everything, because they changed it. That's been like a year. We have to, you know, keep up with those things, because they're, they're operating...
What is that about? Mm-hmm? Right. And move the other building out?
Change of use.
So, oh, okay, so they have to come in for a change of use? Okay. All right, thank you, Leanne, appreciate it. All right, next on our list is our DPW quarterly report director, Kevin Duval. Hi, Kev. Good thing, so good you.
Fever stops raining.
Yeah, I bet. Your mic is not on, huh?
Oh, thank you.
Much better.
Green light, there we go. I would like to mention a couple of big projects that are coming up. I don't know if you've been by the Winnie River Walkway, but we staged all of our granite curbing. We're going to work on installing that granite curbing over the next few weeks, if the weather cooperates with us, because that is working with concrete. If it rains too much, obviously, we, we can't work with concrete, it's not very productive, I should say, so, but with any luck, they'll, it'll cooperate with us and we can get that done. That'll be a lengthy project. It, it's, it's heavy material that we have to handle. I did purchase a special tool to handle the granite curbing, to minimize, obviously, injury to the crew members, but also to expedite the placing of the granite curbing. It's, it's a clamp, and it holds the granite curbing in the center so that you can balance it and place it, instead of wrestling it with, with bars or whatever, so. I did purchase that to make it easy, and, and we can use that tool in the future for other lifting projects, or curb, curbing projects. I am still planning on adjusting the south side sidewalk curbing to make it a more uniform curb for people to walk on. That has another benefit, and that's to make our sidewalk machine a little more effective on that south side, without having to worry about missed curbs and potentially flipping the machine on its side. So we, we're gonna spend some time this year addressing a lot of the sidewalks, just to expedite our, our winter maintenance with the new machine and to minimize any accidents.
When you do the curbing on the Winnipesaukee portion there, are you gonna keep some of the greenery there and, and make the sidewalk just so many inches wide, or are you gonna do it all asphalt from the curbing?
No, 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 we're gonna keep a greenery there. The plan is to set the new curbing alongside the concrete curbing that is there. It's gonna be raised to allow for paving projects in the future, room for paving, without having to lose our new curbing with three inches of new asphalt. So it will be a taller curb, which will be able to level out the, the overburden of the, or the material behind it and reseed it, so it looks nice with the grass. And that sidewalk is slated to be paved this year with the parking lot at T-Hop and the south side sidewalk, that's all getting done all at once. It's a uniform project, no seams, it'll be really nice. So that, that leads me to that next project. I have been in communication with R&amp;D Paving, if you remember, but R&amp;D Paving was initially awarded that bid. They sent me a new contract to sign, and it was same pricing as what they signed off on two years ago, they honored the same pricing, which I thought was very commendable.
Nice, yeah.
So I'm in communication with them to get a timeframe for that project. We are going to lay conduit in the sidewalk for future electricity, if we choose to do so. It will already be there, ready for an electrician to pull wire.
Yeah.
We already have the conduit, it was purchased when we did the north side, so it's not an additional purchase for us this year. My plan is to have the guys saw cut a trench, lay the conduit in the ground, and then when R&amp;D comes in, they can just do their job without any interruption, they can just break out the old sidewalk, install the new, and I don't, if you remember when we did the other side, it was left exposed for a while. I had a lot of complaints of dust and mud and people's shops, which I understood. We're gonna do it a little differently this time, we're, we're gonna go in and lay the conduit in the ground, and when they come in to do the paving, they're just gonna do the paving project, it's not gonna be exposed for any length of time. We are going to coordinate with R&amp;D Paving to do it when the T-Hop is closed. That'll just expedite the project without interruption of pedestrians in the way, and rightly so, I mean, it's, it's not fair to the T-Hop to have their business interrupted. R&amp;D Paving has been very good in the past, working with us with overnight construction in accommodating the storefronts, so looking forward to getting that done this year. We are also slated to have the Chestnut Street, Prospect Street, Hillsbury Ave, and High Street paved, the, the Waring Course, the top course paved this year. R&amp;D Paving had run into a small setback with the weather in the springtime, so a lot of their projects were, were kind of shifted in a few weeks. Right now, I'm waiting for the, this, the timeframe for that scope of work as well. And as soon as I get that information, I'll share it with you, so that, so that it's coming. We'll also put it on the message board, we'll let the, the store, the property owners and the storefronts know when all the work is gonna get done. I think that just helps everybody know that it's coming, gonna have to make adjustments or just be patient with us, and, and we'll get it done as quick as we can. The other project this year that I have slated is Morrison Ave and Grant Street.
You hear that, John? Morrison Ave.
Oh, yeah.
I am in communication with the water departments, we are coordinating so that they can do their job. We are planning on a full reclamation of the asphalt, leaving it exposed so that they can do their job. Once they're finished, I'll coordinate with R&amp;D to come in and do the, we'll do a grade compact with water and do the base layer, leave it, leave it for the winter, just like we've always done, and then in the spring of next year, we'll come in and we'll do the top, and then... We are almost done with the roads that, that need water line repair and paving repair. I'm looking forward to twenty twenty-four, as I talking with the water department, Daniel Drive, the rest of the tree streets will be done in twenty twenty-four, along with the water system. So by twenty twenty-four, that entire section of town should, will, should, will, I don't know what, I'd like to say will, but I, I'm foreseen stuff, should be all set by twenty twenty-four, which would be nice, with the exception of Academy Street, obviously.
Perhaps maybe our water company will prepare, be prepared to repair our lawns that they ruined this year by twenty twenty-four?
I would like to think so.
Low water company?
I did share the ten-year road plan with the water department.
Have you shared it with Sauer?
I have not shared it with Sauer yet. I will.
Will you?
Yes.
Thank you.
I, I did change the format, the format prior to was three-year blocks, and I specified yearly blocks this time, so that everybody knows twenty twenty-four, this is what I'm planning, twenty twenty-five, so I had to do a little bit of adjustment, and also some adjustments with the roads as well, because of the, the hiccups with my plan versus the water department's plan. Still waiting to hear back from the negotiations with the water department on Academy Street. They're coming into July, and I did tell them that July was my cutoff month, whether or not that that job was gonna get done this year or, or have to wait till next year.
Where are we with that? I thought that was...
Waiting on water.
I don't know, we're waiting on the water department, we had to, we're trying to clean up the contracts, because there were so many different versions of the contract.
I thought they sent us a clean copy and we signed that copy, didn't we? We did not sign it.
No.
Okay.
No, it was not a clean copy.
Send it back to them.
So we're still in negotiations with that, although I have monitored the, the condition of that road, and it is, has not changed. With all this rain that we've just had, it has not changed, so if it has to wait until next year, then that's okay. Obviously, if something does happen, we are prepared to deal with it.
I'm not, for one, not very happy with them, because they took away all the berms that you built. The last two or three rainstorms that we've had, the water went down and took away a good portion of Maple Court, and then it just went right into Cedar Street, so now you have all pebbles in Peter, in Cedar Street, and it's, and half of the lawn of our neighbor is ledge pack, and you're not gonna do Maple Court over till twenty twenty-four. So their whole entire driveway is up, half of their lawn is up, good portion of my lawn is up, they didn't dare put ledge pack on mine, but it's all ledge pack, and it's, looks like, it's horrible, and now all the water drainage just goes in the middle of the road, and it doesn't go into the drain that you built across the street where the fire hydrant is, it just sits there.
That's good information to know, I will have a conversation with the water department and, and see where they're at with that.
Torrential downpour just goes right in the middle of the road, and that's it, and it's starting to wash away that.
So there, there was something else that EPW has been dealing with over the last few months that I would like to share. There is a new fire warden for the state of New Hampshire, and he's gone through, gone, gone to all of the communities in New Hampshire that he's responsible for, and he did not sign off on the permits for a majority of his communities, because lack of compliance with distance to vegetation. Hilton was one of the communities that he did not sign off on the certificate. So we had to, we've done some, some clearing up top where the burn pile was, we were not able to get the fifty-foot perimeter for the burn pile. So we've made some adjustments to move the pile to the second level where the ACs are stored, and we had some, we have a stockpile of sand and some other, directly across from the police impound lot. We extended the culvert pipe to the woodline, we backfilled that entire area, so now we've got usable real estate where that culvert was, because it was just an open ditch, it was unusable. So we, we extended the culvert pipe, covered it, moved the burn pile to that location, now we have our fifty-foot perimeter, so we, we can get our burn permit.
Nice.
I did inquire about downgrading our burn permit from a class four to a class one or two, where we could just burn like a homeowner during the rain or after five o'clock, but since we're a municipality, we automatically have to have a class four permit, which sets the, the standards for the fifty-foot perimeter. We were able to bring the department or the, the area into compliance, so now we can get our, our certificate and continue burning without issue. and continue burning without issue.
Great, that's good news. Very nice.
Another thing that I'd like to mention, last thing I think. Started repair of the salt shed. Salt has been doing its, taken its toll on the outer siding, the metal siding that is on the building. So we removed the compromised metal siding. And we're now starting to rebuild the framework and trying to decide what would be better to put in place of that. Instead of the steel roofing material or steel siding that was there. Debating on going with like a treated rough sawn pine, something that could be easily swapped out. Removing one board, replacing it with another. Obviously, I would utilize my sawmill and saw it ourselves, just get it done ourselves. We have a couple of pine trees that need to come down over the next year or so. I could take them down now, saw them into usable lumber and then use it on the salt shed. If you treat the pine, the water seal, some sort. It'll be a protective barrier against the salt. And in my experience, the salt just kind of cures the lumber anyway, it doesn't really rot it. That's, that's, I know the way I'm leaning with the salt shed. Structurally, it's still sound. Any issues with that falling over? Lots of stuff happening this summer.
Vehicles, how are they doing?
Vehicles are doing very well. 2011 Chevy just had some break-in suspension work done on it. Ran into a hiccup with the alignment company that I was using for alignments and was not happy with the quality of work that was returned to me. So I have now started doing in-house alignments. Takes a little bit of time, but it is definitely doable. I can, I can get it done at the shop. Larger trucks, the big trucks are in good shape. They hardly, they hardly ever get used in the summertime. In fact, either one of my crew members just helped me service all of them. It's something that he likes to do, so he helps me with the greasing and the oil changes and things like that. Gives him something, something different to do and does a lot for the morale of the crew if I can give them different things to do throughout the day. The excavator, the bucket loader, it's all in really good shape. 2008 GMC is holding on. Next year I'll probably entertain putting a rack body on that. The guys have been asking for a rack body with removable sides anyway. It just makes it a more usable work truck. More versatile. So I'll be looking at that for next year.
You have some these cars that sit out front of DPW?
I
At a permanent fixture or?
I was hoping that it was, it would be a quick transition, but it has not been a quick transition. We moved them down there. I got word from the police sergeant what police equipment he needed removed from the vehicle so that they could go to auction or sealed bid. So on a rain day, I had the guys help me in the shop. We removed all of the police equipment that he had specified. Then we put it back, put all the cars back out there. That's the last, I notified them that they were done. This was three or four weeks ago. Not even be longer than that, I'm not positive, but it's been a while. And the last time I spoke with the sergeant, I asked what the status was. And he was looking to start the process of a sealed bid with the chief. But that was a few weeks ago and I've lost track of what's going on with that. I have been in communication with the chief about moving the impound lot to the police station or the police property. I firmly believe that that's where it should be, along with their storage trailer. Now that if that space is moved to the police department, that allows me to build a new sander shed, highway sander shed on that concrete area that's already there. So that my sander shed that I have now can be transformed into the recycle center, which we are slated to do this year. So it's, it's almost like I can't do one without the other being done first. So right now I have the highway sanders on blocks in the backyard. Just because I needed to empty that building for the grant writing to take pictures and to make it just to start the process of getting it usable. So that is another project that I would like to see.
Vehicle's feeling more secure up there.
Yes. Yes. The second telephone pole was installed on the property. They had run into some ledge, so they had to come in with some other equipments to set the second pole. And now Daniels is just trying to coordinate with our company to bring the lines across the road and set up our three-phase for the transfer station. That is still in the works. We will be starting to separate glass and aluminum from the recycling. I just finished some signs that we're gonna set up. We already have the concrete blocking set aside, positioned in the bins so that people can just throw these items into the areas. And once we get the baler, we can start baling right away.
All right. Any other questions for, do you have a question for Kevin?
Not a question, just a comment. Kevin, did you want to mention the crew building the watering tank for the flowers?
Oh, yes. I have a creative crew. They took the tank that we use for Winter Rising Riverfront Park and they retrofitted a water pump and a garden hose with a water nozzle in the back of the truck hooked up to the truck power to drive around and water the flowers. Just the water tank and a pump hooked up to the truck. Very creative.
Saves time.
They, it does save time. It's better than the bucket in the river. Seems we're doing more, more watering of the flowers, is more flowers, which is great, it looks great. So it just seemed, I was very proud of the crew for thinking of that and just but it's, it's a tool that can be used in the wintertime for Winter Rising Riverfront Park still. So it wasn't like they sacrificed one to make another. It's still, it's a dual-purpose pump and we can utilize it year-round, so that was really nice.
Yeah, that's wonderful.
Awesome.
All right, any other questions for Kevin?
Not really a question, but if moving the impound lot is necessary to relocate the salt shed for the recycling center. My suggestion would be that talk with the chief, find a location over there.
I spoke with the chief. He is, he was on board with the situation or with the idea. He said that he was going to look at his property and see where he could put it. I have not heard anything since.
How long ago was that?
Four or five weeks ago.
He's on vacation right now. Get back with him when he gets back. Just do it.
Well, you need an estimate.
Yep.
What's it gonna look like?
Well, I have put some thought into that.
Be on a concrete slab?
No, it does not. They have a lot of real estate over there in the dirt parking lot that a chain link fence could be put up. That already has surveillance. The DPW crew can be utilized to move the existing fence. So it's not an expense except for the DPW crew labor.
Tim, you had a statement or a question?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that if you recall, for those of you that were involved in the design of the police station, that there was a location identified for the impound lot. And there was wiring put in for not only lights, but cameras. The cameras aren't there or the lighting isn't, some of the lighting is there. But that was identified and it's on a, I'm sure we have it still on a plan somewhere, preliminary plan. So I think that could help maybe speed up the process too.
Yep, I think it should. Everything's there, should, but I for some reason, and I really don't trust my memories, but it seems to me when we put the the impound lot over there, it needed to be a cement base for some reason because of the oil and things like that on the ground. Something to do with that, and that's why it had to be so many inches of concrete. And I remember the conversation, but I don't know how true that was.
That was the conversation.
Okay.
So I don't, I
Does it have to be concrete or could it be pavement?
I don't know the answer to that.
I don't know.
It has to be something that
It doesn't absorb.
Non-pervious and that's why we have the pad over there.
I was not aware of that.
I believe that one was designed by the then-chief, wasn't it?
Correct, yeah. Chief Cormier designed that one. So, I mean, I would look into that, but we already have the location. Tim is right, that is on plans.
Question regarding that, so if, let's say, oil or gas leaks out of one of those vehicles onto the concrete pad and then it flows across concrete pad and into the ground. That's what we have now.
I don't know.
I believe the concrete pad is pitched in such a way that it doesn't flow off.
Tim, go ahead.
That and or, I recall there was a discussion of a membrane underneath the concrete also, so one or both, but yeah.
It had something to do with the environmental that we had to do. I remember, I don't really know the details, you'll have to figure that out, but.
I wonder if DES specifications on that.
Do you think? Yeah, specifications, everything else.
I think check with other, I think if we don't have the chief back right now, you can check with other impound lots and find out from them.
I know specifically, there's a couple of impound lots that are paved.
Correct.
Not concrete, but paved. Close by.
So just ask them about that.
That's not because my stuff got impounded, let's make that clear. It is very clear to the public. So
Okay.
That, that came about because obviously our footprint at the DPW is small. So I'm trying to utilize every space, all the space I have
I get it.
For the expansions that I want to make.
Right. I get it, I appreciate that because Tim is right, it was on the plans and it was forwarded. Genie has a question.
Just a comment also. We did get the first, Lowe's has announced that we received the grant for the recycle center. And they have already dispersed 50% of the funds. We have a, per the grant, a certain amount of time to start and finish the project, so we are on a, you know, a timeline, so anything we can do to move that impound lot or get that free so we can start moving things over and start the project, because we'd like to start the project as soon as possible.
You can always reach out to Chief Cormier as well. I mean, he'll be able to tell you that as well.
Okay, I save this contact information. So now that Genie has made that announcement, I do have a concrete company slated to come in and do the concrete pad at the DPW. Somebody that you're familiar with? Strangely enough, just like to mention that I had to reach pretty far to get a company that was willing to work with me. There were some pretty high standards that some companies wouldn't come in unless it was engineered.
I'm surprised you found one.
Bayside Concrete out of Alton. I actually went to Gilmanton's Transfer Station. I saw them working there when they were doing their second facility, their second compactor pad. I used to live in Gilmanton, I saw them working there and they did a very nice job there, so I reached out to them. I know they're in Alton. Wasn't sure if they were gonna come out and talk to me, but they did. And sure enough, they, their price was very reasonable, so.
Your brothers? A good outfit.
So, so that's, that's happening. I reached out to them today and they are putting me on their work schedule. They said they should be here in two or three weeks. So that's, that's pretty quick as far as, you know.
We gotta get moving on the other.
Well, it needs to start with the concrete pad, so, I mean, well, everything else, we can work around everything else right now. But there is, we do have to expedite some stuff if I want to be up and running by this winter.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin, appreciate it. All right, at this time, sorry Jane, but this time being 5:51, I make a motion to move into non-public session per RSA 91A, colon 3, the dismissal promotion, a compensation of any public employer, the disciplining of such employer, the investigation of any charges against him or her unless the employee affected has a right to a public meeting, request of the meeting being open, in which case shall be granted in RSA 91A, colon 3, C2 matters which, if discussed in public, would likely adversely affect the reputation of any person other than a member of this board unless such persons request an open meeting. This exemption shall extend to include any application of first system or tax abatement or waiver of fee, fine or other levy if based on inability to pay or poverty of the applicant. Do I hear a second?
Ruggles, second.
We have a motion and a second, roll call vote, please.
Jessman, yes.
Ruggles, yes.
Scanlon, yes.
Dawson, yes.
Constantino, yes.
This conference will now be recorded.
They do, we are over at Southern Lake. We are right amongst the trees.
All right. We're recording. No, I'm not. Okay, we're recording, but there's no signal. So if anybody, okay. Everybody out there can see us, welcome back. Time being 8:16. We are now going to talk about the fireworks ordinance, uh, Genie.
Did you want to seal minutes?
Oh, thank you. I make a motion to seal the minutes of the non-public as because disclosure would adversely affect the reputation of a person other than a member of the board permanently.
Jessman, second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Also, we were given the civil forfeitures for the unlicensed dogs by the town clerk tax collector as she was leaving tonight. So those are being signed somewhere here with the Board of Selectmen tonight. So if you're on the list, come into the town clerk tax collector's office and get your dog signed. Registered, I'm sorry. Okay, fireworks ordinance, everybody. The intent of the ordinance is to well, what started a few years back on this was particularly the village district where people were very close, the houses were very closely together and they were shooting them off and landing on people's vehicles as they were driving by in other people's houses, neighbors' houses, roofs, whatever, and also they were going till 1:00, 3:00 in the morning every single weekend. So that's what started the fireworks ordinances a few years ago. Our prosecutor redid this fireworks ordinance back in February, we just didn't have the time to look at it. I like it very much, I've looked at it several times, I would like to propose just one change in it under general regulations. Page 2 of 3. I would like to take out C, which it says it shall be unlawful to discharge or display any firework within 150 feet of any property line, tree, structure, power, cable, internet or any other cable or line way as defined in RSA 259, 125 or any other object around which the discharge or display of any firework is unsafe. It kind of covers it in D, which it shall be unlawful to discharge or display any firework within 150 feet of any resident, including any neighbors, neighboring residents. Which is our main intent. Some of the issues in the, in the village district, they're, I think alcohol is part of the, part of the issue, but they're, they're in as just within this square of the table here, they're lighting off fireworks and they have a small within, like a fire pit area. And they're lighting off fireworks and they're going two, three, four houses down the way and they're landing on the roofs of garages and houses and things like that. That's what we want to avoid. And I'm a huge proponent of fireworks, by the way, I love them, I love to watch them. But not on my garage, my house is 150 years old. I'd like to keep it for a little bit longer.
Yeah, but she proposed it to be 3, 150.
Those are, those are in Northfield.
Right.
Those are fired in Northfield.
There is that.
How wide is the river? Cut off and then you've got.
But she wants to change it to 150 feet.
Which is still, it still works.
So there's no residence.
Right. Right. Yeah.
So it's okay, there's no distance next to a commercial property?
No, there is.
Get better insurance?
Yeah.
Well, we could say any residence or commercial, we could say 150 feet of any structure, including neighboring residences.
And then the structure would be a small shed.
Right. Right. And then decrease the 300 feet.
Oh, and deep to what?
150. No. Correct.
Eliminate C, but then change 300 to 150 in D.
Right.
I think I'd be more comfortable with it if there was some language in here.
Correct.
There's some kind of authority.
So we can say it shall be unlawful to discharge or display any fireworks. And take out within 150 feet of any property line, tree, structure, power, cable, internet or any other cable line way and just put in as defined in RSA 259, 125 or any other object around which the discharge or display of any firework is unsafe.
But it says no.
No, take out.
Oh, take that out.
Take out within 150 feet all the way to other cable or line way and leave as defined in RSA 259, 125 or any other object around which the discharge or display of any firework is unsafe. That gives them, the RSA and the display of fireworks is unsafe. That gives them the determination to make the, to go and make the determination if the firework display is unsafe to shut it down. Period. And then it shall be unlawful to discharge or display any firework within 150 feet of any resident include, or commercial, including any neighboring residents. Or any, or any commercial or residence, period. It, it's what you get on the packages on your fireworks to say the safety on that. I looked it up, but I can't remember what it says. I could want. Catherine, I'm surprised you have not read.
That's interesting how that.
Kind of covered in C. Any other object around which the discharge or display of any firework is unsafe. That would include a barn full of hay.
Yep.
We're talking about getting rid of C though.
But, no, I'm, no, I'm talking about leaving exactly what Joe just read. Leaving that there.
Problem with unsafe is that's.
It's subjective.
Very subjective, somebody can say, well, you know.
But it says as defined in 259,
Well, there you go.
Colon 125. As defined as. RSA 259, 125? Can't believe Catherine Dawson is not quoting this to us. Oh, it's, so it just is defining way. 259, 125 is defining way. Way shall mean except as provided in paragraph 2, the entire width between the boundary lines of any public highway, street, avenue, road, alley, park, da, 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 da. That's what that's doing. So that's what I would do is, it's, so C shall read, it shall be unlawful to discharge or display any firework as defined in RSA 259, colon 125 or any other object around which the discharge or display of any firework is unsafe. And D, it shall be unlawful to discharge or display any firework within 150 feet of any commercial or residence.
Or, or, don't you mean structures or, I mean, how municipal?
Commercial or residential structure?
Well, okay, so somebody could go down and fire one off, you know, within 150 of a park structure or some municipal, it has.
A hay full of barn, a barn full of hay. It's not a residential structure, but clearly unsafe.
And it's not commercial.
But doesn't that include under any object around which the discharge or display of any firework is unsafe?
That would, but then we're right back to the subjective nature of the word unsafe.
Because the doors were shut to the barn.
Who decides?
Police.
Well, it's.
Well, that leaves for litigation.
We're not gonna go out and enforce this. The police have to go out and enforce it, so, and I don't see anything that says that they're gonna enforce it.
And Jesse wrote it, because any person or firm who violates this.
Why are we not putting any structure?
We can, you want to put any struc, just put any structure?
Yeah.
Instead of commercial or residence? Okay, so it shall be unlawful to discharge or display any firework within 150 feet of any structure.
Because it covers that shed that's in the backyard with lawn mowers and gasoline in it, which is.
Okay, got it? Got it? All right. We all, good. Genie, go ahead.
Good to you, so C, it shall be unlawful to discharge or display any firework as defined in RSA 259, colon 125 or any other object around which the discharge or display of any firework is unsafe. And D, it shall be unlawful to discharge or display any firework with, within 150 feet of any structure.
Yep, I was gonna read it back, but I'll make a motion to adopt the revised Consumer Fireworks Ordinance with the amended changes to page 2 of 3, General Regulation C and D.
Include the changes to page 3 of 3?
Oh, yeah, and page 3 of 3 and add Catherine Dawson's name to that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Actually, that all has to be changed.
Put you out.
Yep.
Oh, all of it, yeah.
All right, do we hear a second? For discussion, can we get this? If, if this passes, can we forward a copy immediately to the police department? A clean copy to the police department and let them know this weekend that this is, was voted on? And let them know that this is what's taking place.
So just one more discussion on this? Voted on it? It says 10:00 PM, Monday through Friday and after 11:00 PM on Saturday and 10:00 PM on Sunday. Well, I mean, 4th of July falls on whatever day it is, you go shoot it off at 10? Or do you want to change it to Saturdays and holidays? Or what holiday you wanted to click?
Well, usually night, when the, when it's dusk is when they shoot them off and usually 10 it's.
10 o'clock will be 4th of July, but Saturday night they can just point, you know, it's for comment.
Monday through Friday. It says fireworks after 10:00 PM, Monday through Friday. After 11:00 on Saturday. What do you think would, wanna do? Monday through Friday, 11:00 PM on Saturday and holidays?
I think you're asking for trouble on the on holidays one.
Okay.
Because if you've got Christmas and then you've got people firing them off and you've got waking up the little kids, I think it's.
Right.
Don't hug your dog day.
Well, just leave it that.
Yeah.
That's kind of consensus on that.
Or insert 4th of July specifically. Because that's the big fireworks holiday.
It's New Hampshire, I don't think there's, you know, there's plenty of big fireworks holidays.
Well, it is, it is for a lot of people that live on the lakes, live out there.
New Year's, New Year's Eve too, I mean, yeah.
But if they're on the lakes, they're gonna shoot it off anyway.
Yeah, they are. Well.
Because they have that 150 feet.
Yeah, they are. If I'm talking about the time, if we added New Year's Eve and bye, or do you just want to say that those seats don't matter?
I think they can get it out of their system.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be over anyway. Because they usually go till about 10.
Well, what would you consider reasonable for people to?
Yeah, up to 11.
9:05 is.
If they're cited.
It's, well, potentially that's what it is.
Potentially, they could.
All right. Do you, folks, do you want to change it or no? Last, last question, no? Okay. All those in favor of the fireworks ordinance? As amended? Aye.
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 That's unanimous. We have a fireworks ordinance. Okay, selectmen's reports. Joe?
I defer.
Okay, Catherine?
I'm just wondering if we want to invite Mr. Panulo to a Board of Selectmen's meeting to discuss the, working further. And the building code books, which I have to look at every once in a while, are within the land use offices. Could those be relocated with the law books? Make them more accessible? When I was here, he specifically said, yeah, just look at them anytime you want, take them, you know, if I can't find them, I'll know where to find them. I've always felt uncomfortable going into other people's office space, even if it was open.
Could you put a copy near the law books? So that the people who use them or might have need for reference to whom have them right there in their office, plus there's a copy near the law books?
It's kind of expensive, I think.
How expensive are they?
We're keeping our, yeah, our RSA's law books out there, these are really law books, building codes.
Copy them?
No.
That's pretty lengthy.
How expensive are the copies?
I don't know.
Have a bookcase out in the.
We do, the law books are in there.
Yeah, that's, right now they're on the stage.
You'd have to have another, you'd have to have another bookcase because.
They take up about this much space.
Oh, how many books are there?
I don't know, I only look at probably, I only look at plumbing, I look at, I'm looking at HVAC, so yeah, I look at. And then they break them up between different types of dwelling units, so I guess it's probably, I don't know, four or six.
To the board. What do you think?
How often do you use them, Catherine? About a week, once a month?
Month, maybe once a month.
How often does land use use them? Same?
Probably more than that.
It would be the building inspector, I would think.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, he's only here 12 hours a week, so.
But right, but they're kept inside.
Yeah, I'm all set with putting them out.
And they're, and now their door is locked too.
Yep. Well, at night, it's, you know.
Because there's offices upstairs.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah. I was just thinking, we already have law books in a place. These are really just more laws.
Are we going to put those law books back downstairs? You say that the law books have been, well, the law books are now.
Law books have always been upstairs.
No, I understand that. And right, sitting right to, as you go out the door. I thought you said they had been moved up onto the stage. Thought that's what I heard.
They're on the stage in, in front, in front, not up where I am.
Oh, yeah, 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 all right, okay.
Where the table used to be.
They're right where they always have been, right?
Right, right.
Yeah.
From over there.
The bookcases just gone, they stick on the stage.
They were moved.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Yes, yes, yes.
That would be great. And then I have a question on payroll. Um, so I was looking through it. And I noticed that a couple of, I think a couple of employees, might be three, I think it's two, paid time off. One of them took a whole day, the whole day off, but only put in for, and I don't remember the exact amount, like two or three hours of paid time off instead of eight hours, because they were on the whole day. And then I looked at the sheet requesting the paid time off, and they requested the whole day off. So why wouldn't there be eight hours of paid time off?
I don't think they have to submit any specific number of paid time off days. If, and if you wanted a day off, if you wanted a day off, you could just take it. You wouldn't have to put in for any paid time off. Why would you?
If I take a day off from work, a day I'm scheduled to work, I wouldn't put in a paid time, show that I took paid time off?
No.
I would just take the day off?
Mm-hmm. You wouldn't be paid.
Oh, right, but.
It's their paid time off. It seems like they could do it any way they wanted to.
I think Catherine is trying to say is that there, if you work Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and you have a total, let's say, an example of 37 and a half hours, and, uh, you wanted to take Friday off, you only used two and a half hours of paid time off.
Mm-hmm. But you took the whole day off.
And you took the whole day off. Because you accrued during the week over hours, the way it used to be, that if you took the entire day off, you took eight hours of paid time off.
Hmm.
Because you're not available to the public.
Right.
I was unaware of that.
But that gets back down to week.
Yeah, but there's nobody who has that option, really. How many people get 37 hours in four days?
But it does, it, if, so.
Well, you, but you're a salaried worker.
I'm going back to, and it is what I'm used to. If I'm a five-day-a-week person, and I've worked four days out of those week, regardless of how many hours I've worked in those four days, I'm now going to take Friday off. My understanding is, you know, we're not going to take Friday off the whole day is to use eight hours of paid time off. If I want to get paid for that day.
Even if it puts you in overtime?
It can't put him in overtime for paid time.
Can't put me in overtime.
You had 37 hours.
I said regardless of the hours I've worked. If I've worked eight hours Monday, eight hours Tuesday, eight hours Thursday, Wednesday, you know.
So if she works Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, eight hours, and then takes off Friday, the only way to get paid for that day is to take eight hours paid time off.
Really?
Right, so.
I've seen people take paid time off for afternoons. I'm going to be gone this afternoon for a doctor's appointment, and I want to get it as paid time off.
And so they take an hour or two? Yes, they take an hour or two paid time off.
There you go.
But that's not reflected in the request. The request is for the whole day. But then if you look at the time card, they didn't take eight hours. They took, and I don't remember, it's like two or three hours.
The issue is, is that if we have employees that consistently take every Friday off or nearly every. Public and offer a service to the public and.
There were employees in this town that could take every Friday off and just get eight hours of paid time off. They've got, they've got 100 hours of paid time off. And, and they accrue more every month.
But they're not taking the paid time off. They're using their hours, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, in taking the day because they have that accrued time.
Was that how it's, what's happening? Was this the payroll?
No.
Oh.
Um, see, I don't think it makes any difference. Because anybody who doesn't use that paid time off is going to lose it at the end anyway, except for a very specific amount of holdover. We have a policy to that effect. And I don't want to be in a position to, uh, manage somebody else's paid time off. Anybody who just takes the day off on Friday all the time and doesn't use their paid time off, well, then it comes as a performance issue. Because we need people on a regular basis that if Kim decided to take every Friday off, that would be an issue in that department. Or Gail, or Jeannie, or whoever. That's a, that's a specific issue. But, you know, how Jeannie manages her time off, or Kevin, or, or Gail, or anybody else should be there. But.
But isn't it dictated by the employee manual?
Call anything in there that says you'd have to take eight hours of paid time off if you were gone for the day?
I don't think it is. I don't, I don't think there's anything in there on how to use paid time off. You, if you had a more than three days, and I think that's the union, though. If, if, if specific, if you had three days or more, you would have to give them a certain amount of time notice to take that time. But I don't, that's the only thing in the employee's manuals about paid time off.
It seems remarkable to me that if somebody is going to take eight hours off, they can do it with just using three hours of paid time off. It makes no sense.
I don't understand why they would, but I think that's their business.
Well, it's really nice to have a, a job where you could work, where you work Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 4:30, and you work a little bit extra, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. And then you could take Friday off but not have to use your paid time off. And then you've accrued throughout the year all this paid time off, and you could buy it out in December.
Thank you, yes.
Some of it, you lose it, just accruing paid time off.
Just an extra benefit.
Good.
They're making an extra benefit for themselves.
And? A what?
Are we, are we serving the public?
No, we're not.
Now, if it got to be something like that, I could see us stepping into it. But is this a consistent thing, Catherine? Or it just happened what?
I just noticed that in this payroll book, there's, there were two, two time cards I noticed it on. And I can't tell you that they were. I just noticed it. I thought it was odd. I'd never seen it before.
Uh, in my business, I can take the day off if I want to. And I can put in for vacation time. We don't get paid time off specifically. They call it vacation time.
It became very frequent that you did every Friday.
I'd be gone and, I'd be gone quick because they need somebody to cover those shifts. It happens sometimes, you know, eh, all right.
In most businesses, the employees are a team. They're all there for a purpose. And when one just decides, it doesn't matter, it just.
If it happened every week.
I'll look at the employee handbook and.
Or just take a, take a look at it then, figure it out.
If you think that needs to be changed, then you could propose a change to it. We could talk about it then.
Yep. Do you have anything else?
No, those are the three things, thank you.
Okay, John? Nothing?
But.
Uh, so one thing is that I had contact, as all of you know, because I briefed you in an email about the summer concerts, which will begin on July 9. In the, the good talks with Titus on the phone, he is very, very, I'll use two varies, capital letters, on board with creating a committee in town to be able to help and help manage that. Um, so I, I think in, in my discussion with him and hearing his excitement about that possibility, I think it's time to sort of solicit and solicit folks who might want to be on the committee to be able to help out and get that going and then get our approval for that committee.
We can announce that at the first meeting?
Absolutely.
At that first concert?
Absolutely, yeah.
Because there's some, I know Dick, Dick Lulett wanted to be on, Richard Lulett.
We can, we can add it to, to every concert.
Yep.
You know, we're looking for members for the committee to help keep this going into the future.
Right, that'd be great.
Yeah, and I think from, from my discussion with Titus the other morning is that, um, it would, I think it would really help him and it would really alleviate so that, and, and then I think it would help us too, so that we can get the communication out there earlier and have everything set up.
Also, books, things, they know.
Absolutely.
Did he say anything about food?
So, no, it, our discussion was solely about just making, he was making, double checking with me, obviously, as a liaison for the site, just to make sure that all the ducks were in a row. And then I led with the discussion in terms of the committee piece and, and everything else, so.
Okay.
It was the food guy.
No, he's not going to be.
No, not going to be.
Um, I still haven't heard a thing about the food.
Okay.
And considering my situation, I don't feel like I can commit to doing that food every week. So I don't know what that means going forward, but I assume that I'll be talking to Titus?
Yep.
Uh, I assume.
You want me to talk and, to the other guy and see if.
I would, I would see if there was a backup.
If there was a backup interest, okay.
Yeah, I would think so. But, uh, right now, Titus is the one who's been, and Allison, of course, has been the ones who, who have put this all together. And, uh, but the more the town becomes involved in it, you know, you know, more that could change.
All right.
Otherwise.
You're.
Yep.
Um, so, uh, I know I texted you, you all. Uh, we lost a, a really great member of our community, Elaine Grace. Um, she was, she served on our planning board a few years ago. And also, she was very instrumental in starting our senior center. Um, she was no scared cat on getting up on the ladder and painting, painting our walls to open up, get our senior center up and opened. Um, she was quite, quite a character. We are, we met, the executive committee met the other day, and we are going to dedicate the stage to Elaine. Now, she was quite instrumental for many, many years in our chat committee and also our, um, opening our senior center. So that's what we're going to do. And on July 15, there's a fundraiser at the senior center for the senior centers, uh, the spaghetti supper. I'll tell you the time next week, the week after. All right, that's it for me. Town administrative report.
Uh, you all got a copy of my report. The attorney prosecutor did send over an agreement. Believe I forwarded that to you. I do have a copy here. He did have a mistake in the document because he, I think he had something wrong with one of the selectmen. So my question to you is, I had asked him to make the correction so I could bring it forward, and I didn't get that from him as of tonight. So what we have is Joe Justman as vice chair, Pat as the chair. Has everyone seen this? I sent it.
I think we signed it.
Well, no. This, it, this is the one for July.
Oh.
Um, so my question to you is, do you want to wait until the July meeting and have a corrected? Or do you want me to just cross it out and sign it tonight before the end of June?
Yeah.
It's fine just crossing it out. Just have to cross out the vice chair on it. Yeah, just initially.
Okay, so I'll get that for you to sign. AED. We have an AED for the, now for Town Hall. We have one for the senior center. My question is, is do you want to get one for the DPW? That's the only building that doesn't have one.
Formal.
Yes.
I'm a yes.
I'm a yes.
Uh, carpet clean for Town Hall. Do you want to, when, after the painting's done, since everything's out of there? Do you want the carpet cleaned?
Yes.
Yes, well, absolutely, yep.
Um, you heard me announce earlier that the grant award for the Lowe's Recycle Center has been announced. Uh, so I will be working with Kevin to start that project soon. Also, what else did I want to ask you about? Sarno. So, they will on, um, Saturday start putting up the fence. Uh, Net called me today and wanted to know how we were going to be, um, notifying the tenants. Mentioned something about us agreeing to put up no parking signs. I don't ever recall that. I, it's not a conversation I had with her. What I remember was that, well, what my plan was to put it on the website, and then I was going to draw up a flyer and have it delivered to all the businesses in any place on Main Street that might be parking there. Um, she then, I think, called Pat and had a conversation with her as well. So they only had six parking signs. And I think they have more than six parking spaces that they're starting, that they're going to be blocking off, so.
Wasn't there talk about bollards and chains Wasn't there talk about bollards and chains along his part of the property?
Without, I think that's what they're going to do, but I, I think based on the conversation with Annette, there was an expectation that the town would communicate with all the tenants and let them know that they could no longer park there. I don't, I guess I don't know why it's.
I don't know is that they have roped off a certain section. There'll be signs at the entrance that says private parking or whatever it says. They took the parking places away from the town and want to make the town responsible for letting everybody know this. I'm not in favor.
I agree with you. We're not.
They can put up their own.
It's not up to us to police their private property.
Exactly. And you know.
Except, except because there hasn't been a lot of notice on behalf of either one of, either us or them. We now have tenants that the day after tomorrow are in that overnight and we also have tenants that live and work in that building that um.
Oh, it's his building, isn't it?
No, there's Mike Agnes' building over there. There's the Gardett building over there. They could be shopping.
Are the bollards in place yet?
No, they're not. However, if, let's say you put those bollards there, they will be towed. So. We're not putting any bollards there, but you're saying, you just made a comment that say, well, we're not gonna do anything. But our tenants that have been there that have, our residents that have lived there and worked there and, and shopped there and, and done all the businesses and everything haven't a clue what's going on because we haven't told them and neither of they have told them, but they're going to get towed. We have a responsibility to our residents that have had overnight parking there for umpteen million years.
Have they put up signs that says no parking? They're just gonna tow people? That's gonna be a problem, I think.
They put up towing, they put up no tow, if they put up on their property on Ju- July 1st, no parking and there's cars there that are in there, they're gonna have them towed.
Well.
At this late date, how would we even begin to notify? Because my understanding is we have not followed through with our permits, have we?
How so?
So when this all started, this, these parking spaces and overnight and whatnot, tenants, people using them, were required to go to the PD and get a permit.
Yeah, they still are.
They still are. So we have a list. The police department has a list of those people.
They should, yeah.
Yep.
Specific list of those people who have been using those spaces.
They should, yep.
All right, then those specific people could be notified, but they'd have to be notified tomorrow.
Yep. Good point. They could call them.
We need to do immediately is update our site that shows where the sites are on our map, because it shows the downtown where you're allowed to park. Effective tomorrow, we need to go and put a note on there and draw in there some part, portion of this lot is parked.
So if we notify these people that can no longer park there, where are we gonna tell them they can park?
Well, you know what, we've, in light of the situation, we've allowed the fire department to have six spaces over there of, in that exact area. Let the fire department park out back in their spaces, in back of their building and allow the, the residents and owners of the businesses in that area park there.
That frees up six.
Six more than we had.
No, I understand that. And, and that's what I'm saying, that frees up six. We could also take. I mean, you would lose it.
We could also take.
Thirty-seven.
Of the parking lot by Tilton House of Pizza and designate some of those as kind of parking.
There are, there are people in Mike Agnes' building that are threatening to leave businesses. They're threatening to take their business elsewhere because there's no parking out back. Then right now the Sanos haven't given any indication of how much the lease is gonna be for a parking permit monthly.
Not a lot we can do.
I know there's not a lot.
We put it on the website and we can come up with a flyer or something and walk them around downtown and.
Well, the other area that we haven't really used is the old post office. Those spaces are just public parking.
They are.
Those could also be designated as.
They can.
Tenant parking only.
We could even go right along the side of Route 3 over there by True Green Park.
Yeah.
It's like half a dozen spaces along that side that really are not, I, they would make good overnight parking or thing and nobody uses them at night.
Genie, go ahead.
Well, remember Kevin just told you he's gonna be working on that. With the curbing, so that's.
When it's done.
Correct.
When it's done, we're gonna lose the parking spaces?
No, no, no.
When that siding, when that siding near the river is done, because he's put in the, he's putting the curbing in now. That's the area that.
Next couple of weeks.
So when he's, when he's finished with the project, then it's absolutely a, a perfect place to do that.
I would suggest we use our parking spaces, the old post office because they're closer.
Yep, yeah. I can see that. And, and one side of the uh, Tilton House parking.
Yeah.
We gotta do what we gotta do. That can't be private parking for Tilton House. As much as I love Tilton House, we need to do what we need to do.
Yep.
Now, just.
What about opening uh, what are we gonna do with overnight parking? Because we've lost that whole side of overnight parking. Where do you want them, the overnight parking to be on the other opposite side of the fire department?
On the, on the.
Right, if you're looking at facing the, the fire department on the right side.
Which side did it, they have the ones on the left side now, right?
I'm not talking about where they park. I'm talking about the overnight people that park along the railroad track to the left of the fire department, where the, where the fire department park. But along the, along the railroad in Sanos parking, there's, all those spaces are filled up with overnight parking.
That's true.
So.
Eha.
I think we should do, keep them all in a group because on the right side by Cecile's place along the railroad track is ours. If we do those.
Are those overnight now?
They are, but not the ones next to the, closer to the church. They're not. That's not overnight.
Let's make it overnight. I don't think the uh, the businesses downtown are utilizing that parking overnight.
No, they're not. But they'd have to get out of there by seven. Go ahead, Genie.
I mean.
Yeah.
They, they can't leave their vehicles there indefinitely.
Right.
They couldn't do that in the back of the lot either.
No. Good, Genie.
So maybe the Godettes would consider letting uh, the town temporarily use that lot next to the bank because that lot is usually pretty empty and I had talked to Paul and Dennis and Donna before about leasing that out, having the town lease set out and they didn't want to make that commitment, but they were very open to possibly letting people park there. And they don't, there are, there are signs there that say they'll tow people, but that's, that's, they've never enforced that. So I mean, there's a lot of parking right there and maybe that's something that they would consider working with us temporarily until we figure out the parking.
If we had maybe a sticker, town sticker on it or something. Might be. Can you find out? That'd be great.
Well, that would be the solution then.
Yeah. With between the. Between the old post office and Mr. Gardett's place, that would be, that'd be thirty-seven right there.
Allowing the spots after the curbing's in.
Yep, and then, and then the overnight, having overnight on the right-hand side by where Cecile's is that placing that is overnight parking.
So I, I don't feel that the burden of notifying everybody that could possibly park there is on us. The burden for marking those spots should be on the person who.
Well, if we notified anybody, it would be a common courtesy.
Yeah, I don't.
Feel like we, we have to.
Well, you need to let them, you need to let them know where they could park.
That's right.
Correct.
Right, right.
Because that is our business.
Right.
Correct, but, but the signage on that private property is not our business.
No, no, the signage isn't, you're right. But we need to let our residents know, hey, we don't have that lease anymore. You need to park over here because you're gonna get towed if you get over there. Unless you lease it.
We can update the parking on our maps and send out the cell phones.
Alert.
Saying, see town website, new parking arrangements.
You know, the police can use that on the overnight parkers. They have the people's cellphone numbers that they could put the alert tilton on the people that park overnight, that have overnight stickers and say you can no longer park at um.
But, you know, keep it short. Say, changes to the parking.
Yeah.
Down there. Go see the website.
Right. Right.
Or click on this link.
Okay. We need, do anything else?
Yeah, I just, so, just back for clarification. Catherine's suggestion about the, having the police call the ones that they have information on who have stickers, yes, on that, having.
Call or text?
What was that?
So. They suggested that we, since we have the names of those who would be parking in Sanos, we could call them and say, you need to park here instead.
Yeah, I think that would be, I think that would be a dispatch people because they take care of the, the stickers. They have a list. We don't. It's the police department.
Yeah, and I, I don't know how soon I'll get a answer from the Godettes, but I'll call them tomorrow and find out. But in the meantime, let's just assume that's not available. Where are we telling people to park?
Well, the other thing is we.
The old post office?
Yep, the old post office and also we, we said that the, the fire department can park behind their building and we can tell the people and the residents that they can park there.
We update the website and have accurate maps of where and refer people to take a look at that, so there's no.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know that that's gonna happen tomorrow. But, yeah, we can. I mean, that's.
I don't know, going to make it effective. Can they wait three days while we notify everybody?
Well, they're not gonna have their bollards up. And I doubt seriously, they're gonna travel up here to see if anybody's parked in that space over July 4th weekend.
They were here.
I'm just guessing.
They were here today, so. Do you still want that non-public?
So. All right, and then the, the last thing I, question that I had was on this application for zoning, just for clarification, or I'm sorry, planning. This is going to the planning board first and then if they recommend it's coming back to the board for you to meet this individual?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. If they recommend. Next meeting? And uh, Genie, can you include next meeting a non-public personnel issue? Okay.
Under all personnel.
Personnel, yep.
Question. Catherine, have you spoken any further with Mr. Penullo?
She just, she just asked for a.
Okay, no, I, I haven't spoken any further. My last report was.
That's. Next week. The next.
But, the non-public personnel isn't about what he just.
No, it's not about that, no.
So, the estimate that we have for the Penullo lot the estimate that we have for the Penullo lot was just over twenty-four thousand dollars.
I think there were, were there three estimates?
Both, there were two right around twenty-four and then the lesser.
Oh, and then the gravel, yeah, that's right.
So twenty-four thousand dollars. What if we offered the Sanos twenty-four thousand dollars? We don't have to do anything to Penullo's lot and we still secure the parking spaces. Just curious, I'm just throwing that out there. Don't know if there's a snowball's chance in hell of that happening. But.
For X number of years, ten years?
Well, for an X number of years type thing. Again, I don't know. I don't know, I was just wondering if you.
What are we paying a year right now?
Uh, nothing.
Eight hundred?
It's, it's uh, it's like three hundred and four hundred, so that's what, it's about, it's about sixteen hundred dollars because it's the first tax bill and the second tax bill.
Oh, okay, two tax bills, that's right.
So there would be, it would be uh, twenty-four hundred dollars a year instead of uh.
Twenty-four hundred is twenty-four thousand?
No, no, over ten years, it would be twenty-four hundred. Cause we were talking just ballparking ten years as a Penullo figure.
And just do it up, upfront.
And.
And we do all the maintenance.
And we do all the maintenance. He would still retain ownership of it and he would have it back after the specified time. And quite frankly, he's looking to sell those spaces to somebody to generate money. This is a scheme to generate money. So I'm just tossing that out.
Interesting idea.
It is an interesting idea.
It's already a parking lot.
Is what happens if the takes the twenty-four thousand, use it towards putting the.
The sprinklers in.
Sprinklers in, says now I get six spots back.
And he would.
Better than losing thirty-seven.
Just saying.
You know, some of those that we.
Oh, I know.
You know Mr. Sarno, right?
Genie, what do you think?
Think that. I mean, I guess what I heard when I was having the conversation that he wants to put apartments up on the third floor. And the sprinkler system, they project somewhere hundred thousand or more. And he's not gonna make that investment. So.
He's not gonna recoup that from selling parking places either. I'm just guessing. That seems like.
I don't know.
But he also.
Boston, but.
But he also didn't want to, he also already committed money and spent money in a loan amount to get to the point where he is at right now. And that he has to recoup some of that money, even if he doesn't go any further. That's part of why he has to spend the money and lease. Right. So, I think it's a good thing to ask.
Say yes or no.
Wasn't he hedging his bets because of the initial cost of
Architect.
The architectural.
Engineering, fire engineering.
Fire engineering.
Yeah.
Study. And, and not being guaranteed approval.
And he didn't want to spend the money.
This would give him upfront money to be able to spend on that.
Maybe, but the, the fixing of the, of the buildings fire code is gonna be tens of thousands of dollars even after the.
Fifteen thousand dollars.
We need to achieve parking space. It would cost us twenty-four thousand to develop that lot. Or we can offer him the same amount to develop the same type.
Let's just ask him. I think we should at least ask.
I don't know what he does with it or whatever.
Right, let's just ask him.
Just ask him.
Ten years.
Yes, sir.
And if you only want it five years, we'll offer him half the amount.
Twenty-four thousand upfront.
Five years?
Yeah.
If you only want it five years, we'll give you twelve thousand dollars.
I, I would offer him twenty-four thousand dollars.
Am I the one who's asking him?
Well, do you.
No, that's fine. I just, I wanna know who's asking him and so if it's me, I just wanna be. Okay, well, I'm just.
Yes, it is gonna be you because you, you have a better relationship with them.
Okay.
I think.
So if it's gonna be me, what is it that I'm asking them?
So.
Ten years for twenty-four thousand. Cash money.
Cause that's what it would cost us to develop Penullos.
Okay, and.
Specifically, I'm thinking that he should know that that amount is what we're gonna pay to develop Penullos, but we, if he wants.
And, okay, and we're maintaining it for ten years?
We'll do the ma- maintenance just as we do now.
And that does, that, that does not include the, the tax bill, correct? This is just a straight twenty-four thousand.
The tax bill would remain the same.
Tax bill is his. Okay.
Yeah, but we give it back to him, do we not?
No, we give it back to him. No, it would be the same. We'd give it back to him.
It's a wash.
So now we're paying.
Yeah.
No, well, it would be the, but we're already doing it, so it would, it's, it's.
Now you're paying twenty-four thousand for ten years plus.
Eight thousand more, approximately.
So now you're paying thirty-four thousand plus?
Thirty-two, yeah.
And you're saying twenty-four thousand dollars.
Hold on, hold on. Genie's asking the questions here.
You're saying twenty-four thousand dollars total, not twenty-four thousand each year?
No, twenty-four thousand total for ten years.
Plus the tax bill.
Plus the tax bill, right? There's one, two, three for tax bill, two against. Three passes.
Could I, could I, I, I'd like to explain some first.
Go ahead.
If he goes and doesn't give us those spaces, he's gonna be on the, for all the tax bill.
That's true.
A hundred percent of the tax bill, eight thousand dollars or whatever.
Absolutely.
Over ten years.
Yeah, so. And that's my thought behind is that we're giving him money. That's the cost of money or we're gonna give him money? If not, we're gonna give him money plus the tax bill. Our number twenty-four.
We're giving him the upfront cost of the money to do what he has to do.
Actually sixteen thousand if he pays the tax bill.
So you're actually gonna pay more for his than you would if you developed Panulos?
I don't know that. Panulo might want the exact same deal, but we still don't know about Panulo really, even if he'll do it. Quite frankly.
That's true, we don't.
Or knows he'll do it, but it's, yeah, it's just a crap shoot.
But let's just ask.
Just after they be interested.
We haven't agreed to it. Just ask to see what he says.
If they say, if they say no.
Right, hold on, will you? Genie.
Kevin also said that that twenty-four thousand was just an estimate.
Mm-hmm, right.
He expects it to be more than that.
Right.
And he does not expect that's something that you're gonna be able to get done this year because we're so late in the season.
But even if they came.
Wouldn't get done this year.
You know, even if it was a few dollars, you know, either way, that if they came back and said, well, you know, thirty, they'll bring it back to us. Say, let me, let me bring it back to them. I mean. If we're parking space for ten years that we've got and we don't have to deal with it and still pursue, continue to pursue our own spaces while we've got this amount of years to develop.
Or with Panulo, if, if we go to, we could dig or grind up Morrison Ave and Academy Street, put the grinds down, roll that down, use it for one year until we can get paved.
Great idea.
It will, not a permanent thing, but at least it's, have something.
What?
What's going on with the building at the end of Mechanic Street? Oh, you got a couple of years.
That'll take a couple of years.
And I can see that as being a parking lot too.
Because we already have parking back there.
Especially for the, when the summer comes, to go back to the island, it'd be perfect.
But down at that end there, are not gonna walk at night to leave their car up at Mechanic Street.
They just walk straight through?
Well, not at night.
Oh, I have. I didn't know that.
All right, is there any more business to come before us in a public meeting? Joe, I think you have something.
I do have something, motion to adjourn.
Yes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Me.
Aye.
That the other day with that whole parking lot thing. About putting, investing the money in that particular.